Thank you for this new day that you've given to us, filled with your grace and your mercy. And Father, I want to thank you for your protection that you afforded this area, this city, in the middle of our hurricane season. Father, thank you for every level of government, more specifically this, this level of government that governs and overrules our city of Beaumont. I'm asking, Lord, that you would grant them the insight, the wisdom, and the compassion as they make their decisions, Father, that concerns the hundreds and thousands of people, that hundred thousand people live here in Beaumont. And then, Father, I want to ask that you would grant them what they need for this specific meeting as they go on their agenda. Father, we want you to have the rule and reign which you are the highest form of government that there is in our hearts and our minds. And we want to tell you thank you as you afforded the, the ability to, to have your way in our lives. Blessed now as only you can, in the powerful, in the precious name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join us for our nation's pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Muton.
Present.
Mayor Protem Samuel. Councilmember Duryo. Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Present.
Councilmember Felschah.
Present.
And Councilmember Neil Absinthe.
Thank you. We have one presentation today that will be given by our city health director. Thank you.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Mr. Hayes. This is our weekly COVID report. When I was with you last week, I did a three-week report, so now we're coming back to the weekly report. For the week of September the fourteenth through the twentieth, we had 1,052 new cases. So this week, September the twenty-first through the twenty-seventh, there's an additional 673 cases. So the number of positive cases are declining. But for the week of September the fourteenth through the twentieth, we had 12 deaths. This week, we have 19 deaths. So even though the numbers are decreasing the number of positive cases, we're starting to see an increase in the number of deaths. The death range is from 19 years of age to 80. The average age of the current death that we see this week is an age of 52. So we're starting to see an increase in death. And the younger generation is dying more now than previously in the pandemic. For the ages of 14 to 17 in Jefferson County, they represent 23% of the total cases. The same age group for the city of Beaumont, it represents 18%, which is a drop from last week of 26%. And I will contribute some of that decrease to our only school district, which is the largest school district in the county, has put in the mask mandate. And we have also, the dioceses also have put in the mask mandate. So I would contribute some of that decline in the number of school-aged kids testing positive due to the mask mandate. Our hospitalization is going down. September the twenty-first, we had 165 patients in the hospital. As of yesterday, we have 113. But again, the unvaccinated represent 89% of the COVID-positive patients in our hospitals. Last week, we had 61 of our patients that were on ventilators. Yesterday, we had 42 that was on vents, but 90% of the 42 was unvaccinated. So we still see that the unvaccinated are the ones that's at most risk for being hospitalizedized, being on vents, as well as death. So again, we still want to encourage everyone to get vaccinated because our vaccination numbers are going down. Last week, we had 1,807 people in Jefferson County that either got their first dose, their second dose, and that additional dose. This week, it's only 1,241. So we're not seeing an increase in the vaccination numbers like we should and like we want to. So again, we just want to encourage everyone to get vaccinated if medically you can, age-eligible as 12 years of age and above. So we still want to encourage everyone to get vaccinated, continue to wear your mask. Also, at the Beaumont Health Department, we also have our clinic that's open. We open every day of the week, Monday through Friday, and we do have the Moderna and the Pfizer. So we're still administering the vaccine as well as that additional dose, as well as that booster that was just approved by CDC. So again, we just want to encourage everyone to, to continue to be safe. Last week, our 14-day average of new cases, we was averaging like 155 for the county. That has decreased to 116. Number of positive cases in our hospital, it went from 21% to 18%. Number of positive COVID patients that's in our ICU, it went from 93% of last week to 66% this week. But we're still high, we're still too high, coming down, but still too high. So we need to get that number much, much lower be, before we can kind of get back to what we call some normalcy. So again, we just want to encourage everyone to be safe, practice social distance, wear your mask when you're around crowds of people where you don't know their vaccination status. And again, the best tool we have is the vaccine. And again, we just want to continue to encourage everyone to get vaccinated. And that's our weekly report. If you have any questions.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Getz.
I received a call today concerning what the city of Beaumont was doing to get vaccinations to those amongst our homeless population. Do we, as a city, have anything in particular that we're doing to try to accommodate our homeless population for vaccinations?
As a health department, no, but we do partner with, like, Triangle Area Network, who have a mobile clinic to, to set up with the homeless. We've also spoken with some other place about getting a mobile clinic over there to test the homeless. Because the reason being is these vaccines are very, very fragile. And so when you take them from the right temperature, right refrigeration, they have a tendency to lose their efficacy. And again, with the homeless population, that's a very difficult population to deal with.
Your conversation with some other place, because that's kind of where I was thinking as well. It, is it possible that our health department could go ahead and collaborate with some other place to have one day a week designated where we could have an official over there for certain periods of time to administer vaccines and see how that goes, at least on a trial basis?
We can look into that, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Coleman, thank you so much for your update and your presentation. Again, you've heard the status of our city, our county, where we stand at this point. We're still asking for everyone if they would please consider getting your vaccine so that we can not only lower our numbers, but be safe within our community and our city. Thank you so very much. Now's the time for any citizen who would wish to speak on consent agenda number one and items number four through seven. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip at the back of the room, hand it to the clerk to the front of the room. Once that's done, she'll call your name to the podium so that you may speak. The green light will come on for your three minutes, and the red light will come on at the end of your three minutes. So Tina, do you have?
No, ma'am, I don't have any at this time.
Okay, we don't have anyone at this time? So at this time, I would like to make a motion for approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
So moved to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Councilmember Getz.
I would request that item B be dealt with separately instead of considering this approval of increased base wages as a group for the four employees directly accountable to the city council. I'd ask that they be done separately.
Does any other council agree on having it done separately?
What does anybody object to having it done separately?
Any objections?
Would Councilman Getz please clarify his reason for wanting to separate it?
Yes, because there are some employees that I might feel deserve an increase in compensation and that there are others that I might feel that don't deserve an increase in compensation. When you put them all together, you put us in a box so that we have to agree to all or, or none. So that's why.
Any other discussion? Any other objection? I would like to say that I object to it. Councilmember, on last Wednesday, we had executive session, and you were not present for that executive session, and I, for whatever reason, you were not there, and that was by your choice. So at this time, I would like to move forward.
Well, then can we at least have that item voted on separately from the consent agenda so that I wouldn't have to vote against the entire consent agenda?
You're welcome to vote however you choose to vote, councilmember, but at this time, I'm going to move forward. Thank you. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
The motion passed with one abstention. Thank you.
I didn't abstain, I said no.
I'm sorry. We want to oppose. Thank you, sir. At this time, may I have the reading of the first item, please? Item number one.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and council, item number one is an ordinance of the city of Beaumont, Texas, authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Beaumont, Texas certificates of obligation, series 2021, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $29,235,000 for the construction of public works, letting a tax and payment thereof, making other provisions regarding such certificates of obligation, including authorizing the preparation and distribution of one or more preliminary official statements, one or more official statements, and matters incident thereto, awarding the sale of the certificates, authorizing the execution and delivery of one or more purchase agreements, authorizing the execution and delivery of a paying agent registrar agreement, authorizing and confirming the engagement of certain professionals in connection with the issuance of the certificates of obligation, finding and determining that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, and enacting other provisions relating thereto. Dusty Trailer is our financial advisor with RBC Capital Markets Incorporated. He's going to come up and lead this item, and before he does, I'd like to thank a number of people. Craig Brast is on the second to back row standing up as one of the underwriters, represents one of the underwriting firms. U.S. Williams was another representative of one of the underwriting firms, and I know a lot of you know him and his work. Derek Mitchell is our bond counsel with Holland and Knight out of Houston, and Todd Semino and his staff, it was a collaborative effort. They worked hard on this for quite some time, and we appreciate them very much.
Thank you, Kyle. Mayor, members of the council, it's a privilege to be before you this afternoon. Again, it's Dust, my name is Dusty Trailer, managing director with RBC Capital Markets. And as, as Kyle indicated, it was, it was truly a collaborative effort here, and I want to especially just point out the work that your, your staff here, starting with, with Kyle, Todd, Mr. Cooper, and the team, from the moment that you guys give us the go to work towards the issuance of the certificates of obligation, that work does not just fall upon our shoulders, but that work also falls upon the shoulders of your staff as it, as it comes to the help and preparation of the preliminary official statement, the bond rating calls and presentations to the bond rating agency. And your, your team does a very, very great job of representing you and the city of Beaumont in that work. Through that process, we had the city's rating with Moody's Affirmed at the AA2 level. That's a very solid and firm bond rating. And what that does is that represents to the bond market just how financially safe and secure the city of Beaumont is, and translates to you guys being a very strong credit risk to investors and allowing them to purchase your bonds at very favorable rates. We, we entered into the market yesterday with the underwriting syndicate, as Kyle said, with Estrada Hina Hosa and Huntington as the two underwriters. And the final all-in fixed interest rate over the 20-year life of the certificates of obligation is a 2.18%. Again, that's a fixed rate over the life. These bonds will also, or these COs will also carry a nine-year call feature, actually about an eight-and-a-half-year call feature. Typically, municipal bonds are sold with a 10-year call feature. We're able to negotiate and shorten that up. That gives the city some additional flexibility down the road to potentially refinance, or if you're able to, early retire and pay off a portion of these bonds early. So that flexibility is a great benefit to you. All in all, a very great sale. The actual stated par value of these certificates is $29,325,000. However, we will be depositing a full $33 million into the city's project account. That differential there is made up by a premium paid for by the investors in the COs. That's a very common thing that we're seeing in the marketplace right now. It happened with you guys. So your, your stated par value is, is less than 30 million, but you will be receiving the full $33 million to your project fund that you put in your notice of intent. Once your bond counsel has taken the documents and presented them to the Texas Attorney General's Office for their review and approval, once the AG gives that approval, we anticipate closing on the COs and the money being deposited into the city's bank account on October the 26th. So all in all, these low rates translate into lower debt service figures. As Todd and I were going back and forth this summer, looking at various scenarios, when we looked at the 20-year scenario for a $33 million CO, this particular debt service works out to about $65,000 per year less debt service than what we anticipated when we were running the pro forma calculation. So over the 20-year life, that's quite a bit of savings to the city. So again, congratulations. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions? No questions?
All right.
Thank you.
Very good.
Appreciate your report.
Great to see everybody this afternoon.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, the administration recommends approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number one. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
I'm sorry, the clerk missed it. Councilmember Samuel first and Councilmember Turner second. Any other discussion? Please signify by saying aye for approval.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Before I move to our second item, I just realized and noticed that our sheriff, Sheriff Xena Stevens, is to the back of the room. Thank you so very much for joining us today. Mr. City Manager, may I have the reading of the second item, please?
Mayor and council, item number two is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow an ambulatory surgery center in a GCMD II, general commercial multiple-family dwelling II district, for property located at 6510 Folsom Drive, the city of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. AccuHealth Surgery Center is requesting this, the specific use permit. At a joint public hearing held on September the 20th, the planning commission recommended five to zero with one abstention to approve the request with one condition listed in your staff memorandum. The administration recommends approval with the same condition.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number two. May I have a motion, please?
So moved item number two with as read.
May, may I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please signify by saying aye for approval.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number three, please?
Item number three is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow healthcare facilities, sporting event facilities, and an event hall in an RMH residential multiple-family dwelling, highest density district for property located at 3455 Sarah Street, the city of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Sarah Street Wellness Group is requesting a specific use permit. At a joint public hearing held on September the 20th, the planning commission recommended six to zero to approve the request with one condition listed in your staff memorandum. The administration recommends approval with that same condition.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number three. May I have a motion, please?
So moved to approve with existing condi, conditions.
Second.
I have a, approval in a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, just, just one quick thing, mayor. Just for confirmation, Mr. Manager, can you confirm to the community, this is the OY building on Sarah Street? For the people watching, that may not be aware with the address, is this correct, same building?
Correct. The former Melton YMCA facility there on Sarah. That's been recently painted, a lot of renovations, and looks pretty good.
And is open to the general public?
I'll let Mr. Boone answer that. I'm not, he's been meeting with the owner.
Yes, sir, they've indicated that it would be open to the public. Yes.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number four, please?
Mayor and council, item number four is consider authorizing the city manager to award a contract to Tomek's Construction LLC of Houston to rehabilitate sewer lines by the pipe bursting method and to replace defective manholes. Four bids were received for furnishing all labor, materials, and equipment for the project. The water utility staff recommends the project be awarded to the lowest bidder. Tomek's in the amount of $1,777.50. A total of 365 calendar days are allocated for completion of the project. Funds are available in the capital program. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number four. May I have a motion, please?
So move for approval, item number four?
In a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Duryo.
Yeah, I'd want to know what exactly is a pipe bursting method?
It's a method for replacing the sewer line where they go through and they break up the old sewer line and pull the new sewer line through it. So you have less impact on the surface because you just have the hole at, at either end every so often as we go through.
Councilmember Getz.
Can you tell us what locations is being contemplated for pipe bursting with this resolution?
This, this area is what's known as Basin 38. It's roughly located between Highland Avenue A, Usan, and near, I may butcher this, Hegel Street, H-E-G-E-L-E. Hegel. So it's a, it's an area over there, kind of sort of about Florida as well.
It's majority ward four.
Yeah, it's, it's a fairly small area, so it's all in ward four.
Hegel down, going south, past Sarah. I'm passing a map around, take a look at it.
The, the reason, this was noted sometime back that it's a very high inf, water infiltration area. So we haven't had as many issues in the area with sewer backups. We hadn't gotten to it yet, but it's a good area for us to go through, pipe burst all the pipes. All of the area goes to a single collection point that's going to allow us to do assessment before and after the project and definitively mark how much we've improved on the, on reducing that water infiltration in the area, so.
Councilmember Turner.
What, I noticed we have four contractors that bid on this contract. How many contractors did we send to bid out to? Roughly, rough estimate, was it just four or five, or was it more?
That'd be a question for purchasing. I'm not sure.
Yes, not stated in the agenda memo. I'd have to request that information.
Okay, thank you. And my, my second question is, you know, I understand this the lowest bid, but what happens in the case of, if, yeah, they bid at the lowest bid, but they come back and request more due to the fact that they may get to work and, and see that it's unforeseen work? They, it has just come back in front of the council, you know?
Yeah, anything over $10,000 requires council action, a change order. So we don't let them do that, meaning they can come back and say there's unforeseen issues that were not in the specifications or the bid specs. And if they're right, you know, they start digging and find things down there that, you know, we didn't have on the maps, then yes, we come back and recommend a change order, but they don't get to determine that.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to confirm, in most cases, they don't, that's what I want to confirm.
Yeah, most, most of the time not. I think there was a recent one where they had a line penetration by some concrete and you couldn't really pipe burst through it. So you'd get a change order, and then you'd do a point repair on that. Like Kyle said, it'd come to y'all if it's over a certain amount.
Councilmember Duryo.
Oh, you know about how long this project gonna take?
A year.
A year? Will anybody, any, any loss of services while they're doing this as far as?
Sometimes.
Services?
Sometimes for hours. Sometimes, I mean, it depends on if they run into certain issues. It, it can happen, but they, they put the, the owners of, you know, whether it be a residence or business on notice, and, you know, we're going to be out there at these times and replacing your sewer line. So at times, it, it can, can happen.
Councilmember Felschah.
Thank you, Mayor. Bart, for the sake of the public, we can confirm again at this time that we have repaired and or replaced 50%, over 50% of the sewer lines in Beaumont.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor of approving, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number five, please?
Mayor and council, item number five is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending chapter two, article 2.04, section 2.04.002A of the Code of Ordinances of Beaumont, Texas, relating to declaring Juneteenth as an official holiday for city employees, providing for severability and providing for repeal. Couple of you brought this to my attention this summer, and this is the, the time to make any changes as we, after October the first, let our employees know what the declared holidays are. So the Code of Ordinances specifies the various holidays for city employees. There are currently 10 declared holidays and one special day taken at any time. It's often referred to as a floating holiday. Approval of the ordinance would add Juneteenth as a declared official holiday.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number five. May I have a motion, please?
So moved to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Councilmember Getz.
You know, having a holiday that celebrates the abolishment of slavery is a good thing. I like that. I do want to know, however, how this is going to impact the city budget.
Probably $40,000 in overtime per holiday.
And it will also shut down city hall and other city facilities, I presume?
Yes.
Is any thought giving, given about substituting Juneteenth as opposed to? Is any thought giving, given about substituting Juneteenth as opposed to the special day taken at any time so that you wouldn't have another day where citizens couldn't receive services and it wouldn't impact our overtime?
Yeah, at the work session or discussion, we had a discussion, Adam, I think it was last week, that was brought up, and it's a council decision.
Well, then I would move that this be amended, that we make Juneteenth an official holiday and substitute it for the special day taken at any time so as not to shut down city facilities for our citizens an additional day and not to incur additional overtime expenses. That's my motion.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? I take it by your silence, there's no second? All in favor of approving item number five as presented? Please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, mayor. Have the reading of item number six, please?
Item number six is to consider approving the write-off of uncollectible delinquent accounts. This request is in accordance with the write-off policy approved by the city council. The policy gives council the final authority to write off an individual account receivable identified as uncollectible when the balance due exceeds one thousand dollars. The total to be written off on this item is nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand, forty-four dollars and thirty-three cents. However, please note that if at any time an account becomes collectible, after having been written off, the receivable shall be adjusted accordingly. The balance of the account shall be reinstated and payment shall be applied to that balance. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number six. May I have a motion, please?
So move for approval?
May I have a second? Any discussion? Councilmember Durya?
A couple of questions. What's the difference between collectible and uncollectible?
Well, so we'll send out bills or invoices for different services, and then we'll turn them over to a collection agency that's approved by the council, and they work these accounts on a continual basis. And after a certain period of time, if they feel like it's not collectible and we're continuing to carry those accounts on our books as if, you know, their receivables out there that we're counting on, which, and we know, hey, it doesn't look like these folks are gonna pay us, then we'll bring, bring these items to you to write off. Again, if they come forward and pay us, we're gonna, we're going to collect it. We just don't want receivables on our books that aren't good receivables.
Has anyone that's, you, uh, declared delinquent, have they ever came through and decided to pay?
They have. Yeah, different times they might.
So this is a benefit to the city to do that?
It is. You just want to, you just don't want to carry, again, bad receivables on your ledger, meaning in our financial statements.
Is this what Lynn Burger does?
They're one of the.
Collection agents?
Yes.
I also, um, I'm looking, reading reports. With every report, it will match a social security number, uh, date of birth, spouse, so the account becomes active. I can track it down as well. And it's pretty remarkable.
Danette Mickens, who's over at Water Customer Service Division, she does a really good job, and so they're working it every, every day. We have, we have also a division in this, on the first floor, City Hall, and they're working accounts and handling our collections for us to a certain point, and then they're turned over to a collection agent.
Ms. Mickens, could you please come forward to the mic so that the listening audience could hear your statement? Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Every Monday, I have a system that I run, and it actually tracks, um, social security numbers, date of birth. It will match the spouse and also driver's license, and at that point, it will tie to active account. Once it ties to active account, I will move the unpaid balance to the active account, and it becomes collectible. So so far this year, I've gotten a balance down by, I think, thirteen thousand.
So if anyone comes in to make application for, for water?
Mm-hmm.
Then you would see?
Absolutely.
See that?
Right. I also have a system that matches divorce and marriage license. I also run car tags, so it's multiple tools I use to collect debt. I play the specter gadget.
So you said even divorce?
Yeah, I have a system that runs divorce, divorce decrees.
Okay. So I, I think that pretty much covers every base.
Yeah, so they can't get away from me.
Okay.
Why the, uh, the thousand-dollar limit? Over a thousand?
Yeah, everything else, staff can write off. So it's just an arbitrary number the council chose back in nineteen ninety-nine, but it could be changed if the council wanted to.
Mr. Manager, if I could add just a point of clarification also? Sure. So what Danette's talking about are water accounts, which will be on the next agenda memo. Right now, we're talking about weeds and EMS, but they all go together as part of our annual housekeeping for, for our books in preparation for our audit. You know, our, our fiscal year-end is the end of September, so we always come to you every year at, at the end of September to write off what our auditors and basically generally accepted accounting principles would consider an uncollectible account. So it's a bookkeeping cleanup issue. We are not actually writing these accounts off and gonna cease collection efforts. It's, it's just for our, basically our audited financial statement presentation.
That's right. When I look at it being new to the council, I was just wondering, why would we stop trying to get this money?
Oh, we don't stop.
But how would you explain?
Yeah, every Monday, I run a report.
Councilmember?
Does it include EMS and weed abatement?
No, just, I'm sorry, it just includes our water.
I just want to clarify that, that you're not tracking EMS or weed abatement?
No, just water.
But there is a lien that is placed on, um...
Yes, for the weeds, uh, abatements, if, basically if the property value it's attached to is over five hundred dollars and they're semi-current on their property taxes, then we attach a lien to those. So in case they're sold in the future, um, we can try to recoup that, that money.
Absolutely. Councilmember Felschel?
Yeah, just, uh, just curious. This, this number represents from two thousand eighteen to twenty twenty. So it's obvious that I wasn't on the council prior to twenty nineteen. What was the last number that, do you remember the last number, like on EMS?
Usually, usually EMS is somewhere between seven hundred and fifty thousand to plus one million.
So every three years, we can anticipate?
No, it's every year.
Every year.
What I'm talking about, you're, you're coming to us now representing the last three years, correct?
Right.
So.
But next year.
What do we average yearly, though?
It's, um, that's what I'm trying to say. So next year, instead of like two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty, we'll come to you with maybe two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-one. And the reason is because sometimes some of these old accounts are on payment plans, and when they discontinue the payment plan and, or we lose contact with that person, then it becomes uncollectible. So every year, the EMS amount that we write off is close to a million dollars. And the reason is, that's the nature of the business. Most, most of the EMS, um, people that we provide services for don't have any insurance at all. We collect probably ninety-five percent for those that are insured, those that have Medicaid or Medicare, but for the self-insured, we, we really have our hands strapped, and that's an industry benchmark, as of around sixty-four percent overall, and that includes the insured accounts. But if you're talking about just the self-insured, it's, it's probably less than twenty percent collection rate on that.
Again, just curious, you may not have this number. What does that one million dollars a year represent as far as the revenues into that EMS account?
We usually bill, um, three to three point six million a year.
So about a third of that is loss?
Correct. And like I said, that's an industry standard. Without filing lawsuits against them, your hands are really strapped, and the only time we file a lawsuit is when there's a motor vehicle accident attached to that EMS run.
One more question, Mr. Manager. Do they, um, when they become uncollectible, are people stopped paying? Do we report it to, uh, credit reported agencies?
So for, for EMS and weeds, we do report it to the credit agency. For water customers, we don't because we have, basically, we have the control of what they need. So if they want water, they gotta pay their bill. So we have a higher, much higher collection rate on that.
Any other discussion or comments? Ms. Mickens, thank you so very much. All in favor of approving item number six? Please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number seven, please?
Mayor Council, item number seven is to consider approving the write-off of uncollectible water accounts. The water accounts total thirty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents. This request is in accordance with the write-off policy approved by the council. All accounts have been terminated for at least one year, and collection efforts have been unsuccessful. The termination dates for these accounts range from April of twenty nineteen through March of twenty twenty, and a customer with a written-off account will not be able to obtain new water service with the city until the balance has been paid. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number seven. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Councilmember Gitts?
Why are we writing off the water account for Cheddar's Restaurant? I thought they were still operating.
So, um, Danette could probably speak on this more, but basically they filed bankruptcy, and once they do that, it clears, it clears that, that obligation.
So it would be in bankruptcy court? Uh, Councilmember Turner?
I don't know if this question is on the lines of the same thing, but I'm gonna ask it 'cause someone asked this to me before. So if somebody doesn't pay at a particular business and another business moves in, does it, does the balance fall on the person moving in, or does it follow the person that didn't pay?
It falls on the person that left outstanding debt. Usually, we have a deposit large enough to clear that balance, but it falls on the person left in debt.
Okay, thank you.
It usually verified by deed of sale, deed of purchase.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, please? All in favor of approving item number seven? Please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Mr. Manager, can you please take us into the public hearing, but before you do so, I will ask Mr. Boone if he will go over the guidelines. Thank you.
Um, and mayor, we do have one, we have one public hearing before the unsafe structure public hearing, uh, the one on the caper, so.
Yeah, it's kind of hidden, uh, in your packet. It's a, it's a green sheet that says, uh, public hearing received comments on the twenty-twenty consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, uh, for the caper that will be submitted to Department of Housing and Urban Development. We'd ask that you'd hold a public hearing on that item.
Okay, Mr. Manager, okay. We're gonna open the floor for the public hearing. Is there anyone would like to speak on this item?
I don't have any, mayor.
Okay, there's no one, so I will close the floor to this item.
Okay, we'll move to this. The second public hearing does relate to dangerous structures. I'll read the caption and turn it over to Mr. Boone. It's an ordinance entitled, an ordinance finding certain structures to be public nuisances and ordering their demolition and removal or repair, providing for severability and providing for penalty.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. In a moment, the council's gonna consider, um, whether or not to order demolition or to allow a work program on the following items. However, before, before that happens, we want to discuss some of the rules that are associated with, uh, work programs, um, if they are authorized. First, the, uh, in order to enter into work program, uh, you have to own the property, have legal control of the property. Uh, second, all taxes, back taxes must be paid or, uh, a payment plan must be authorized by the Jefferson County To- Tax Office. Uh, there is a ten-day time limit from the time of this hearing in order to enter into a work program. If the property is sold, it should be noted that the, uh, the time limit on a work program does not start over. It continues, uh, as stated in the original work program. And then regarding the timing of a work program to repair a structure, um, the allotted time is one hundred and fifty days. Within that one hundred and fifty days, the, within the first ninety days, the structure must be dried in. So the roof must be repaired, walls must be repaired, uh, windows, doors, et cetera. And then in the remaining, within the remaining sixty days following that, uh, the work must be completed on the structure and a certificate of occupancy, uh, must be granted, uh, again for the entitled, entire one hundred and fifty days. And also, real quickly, mayor, we do have, uh, we will have copies of these instructions, uh, both after the meeting in English and in Spanish, uh, both here after the meeting is, uh, but also on the second floor as well.
Thank you. May I have a motion? We're not gonna do a motion now. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and start with, um, the first item. Item, uh, twenty-four forty-five Amarillo Street.
No, I'll ju- I only have two. I'll call them out.
You have two people?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, Wilford Richard, thirty-six eighty-eight Blossom Drive, Beaumont, Texas. He's speaking on item number seven, eighteen twenty-five LG.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Are we setting the timer, three minutes, mayor, or?
Yes.
Okay, just want to double check.
This house, good evening. How y'all doing? This house been in a bad neighborhood for years. I think the city of Beaumont, which I dealt with Lieutenant Mike Mills, when they had two houses across the street in the middle, drug houses. I had a heck of a time trying to keep a rent in there because of the drugs being sold and then the shooting the windows out on the house. The last time we started putting work and money in the house, we put the windows back in the house, and those rascals took those rocks, 'cause the house is next to the railroad track. They throw the rocks, the rocks still in the house where they bust the windows out. I've had all kind of help to get that ne- that neighborhood straightened out.
Number seven.
But those two drug deals are now in the penitentiary because of Lieutenant Mike Mills. But the owner that, those two properties, he continued to rent to those type of people. So I, I'm fighting a losing battle, but I still would like to keep my adopted mother's home going because it's been there for years, since eight, uh, nineteen, I think, oh eight. My great, great-granddaddy Ernest Cunningham built the house.
Okay.
And it's been a problem.
So would you like to enter into?
The program, yes.
A work program?
Yes, ma'am. I'm gonna give it a try again.
Okay. And, uh, Mr. Boone, he's allowed to enter into a work program?
So there may be a question of ownership. So if council were to authorize moving forward, he would have ten days in order to work with our staff and the city attorney's department to determine whether or not he had, uh, owner, ownership or control, adequate control of the property.
I've been paying the taxes on, since, since Irene passed away.
Okay, what you'll be able to do is go to, um, Mr. Boone's office.
What floor is that on?
Second floor. Go to the second floor, get with Mr. Boone, and, uh, whatever documentation that you have or paperwork to discuss it with them so that we can approve. You have ten days to do that?
Mm-hmm.
So that we can approve a, a work program for you.
Now, what kind of documentation do I need to bring?
Again, we would have to get with our city attorney's office. Whatever documentation you have, you could bring it to our office.
Taxes and all that, pay the taxes.
Whatever you have, yes, sir. Yes, sir, whatever you have.
All right. Then another thing I want to say before I leave. We have trouble with brown water in the city of Beaumont. I see every now and then they're tying up old fire hydrant and pulling it up. If the city of Beaumont would replace all these old fire hydrant that was probably bought through an American Dollar valve, you would get rid of that brown water. Did you see how rusty those fire hydrant are that comes out the ground? We ride by and take pictures of them after they get through pulling them out. We got a bunch of pictures of them, and they, that's one of our main problems, I think, right there. It's not getting the water out of Nature's River or wherever, uh, Globe, Chance Globe. It's, it's those old rotten fire hydrant that we have this, we got our, our drinking water connected to the fire hydrant. When did that occur in the city of Beaumont? That's a mistake right there. That's a mistake right there.
Thank you, Mr. Richard.
Ma'am?
Thank you.
All right, am I three minutes up?
Yes, sir.
Y'all didn't beat me.
Sergio Arvalo, 4441 Whitlawn, Beaumont, Texas, item number 25495 Shawana.
Item number 25?
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. You're gonna translate?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Okay, one moment. Okay, we have item number 25495 Shawana. You may proceed.
He said he wanna get on a work program because he said his six months are up because of all the pandemic and the pipe they got in the cold. He said work has been so slow.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
He said work has been so slow and the materials all went up and they hard to get right now. He said he hasn't been working on it. He said his six months are up. He wanna get in a work program for more time.
So he's wanting to apply for a second work program? Mr. Boone?
So the property was originally tagged in September, September 21st of 2020. I believe they have applied for one pre-council work program, which has expired. City Council, if you choose to, of course, you could authorize an additional work program if all the conditions are met.
Okay, do you understand that applying for a second work program, that if he doesn't comply with the timed, within the timeline, any work that he's done, it cannot be extended after the second work program? Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
He said where he needs to go, where he?
He needs to go to the second floor? To Mr. Boone's office? And you can do that while you're here today, if it's approved.
That's all I have, Mayor.
That's it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we have two requests. Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, we have one more public hearing, Mayor and Council. It's to receive comments related to the property located at 3910 Buffalo Street. And then I'll read the ordinance. It's an ordinance entitled, "An Ordnance Finding the Structure Located at 3910 Buffalo Street" to be a public nuisance and ordering its demolition and removal as a clear and present danger to public safety, providing for severability, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, and providing an effective date. So at this time, Mayor, it would be appropriate to have the public hearing and then consider the ordinance.
Okay. We're gonna open the floor for this public hearing. Is there anyone here?
No, ma'am, I don't have anyone.
Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Counsel, the administration recommends approval of the ordinance.
Thank you. Okay, you've heard the reading? All in favor? May I have a motion, please? I'm sorry.
I think we need eight and nine.
We need to do item eight first.
Do item, we're gonna do them separate?
Yes, ma'am. We didn't do item number eight.
Okay, item number eight. May I have a motion, please? May I have a second?
A second, but could we get clarification? Are we, are we as a council excluding item number seven and 25, the two people that came up?
No, not yet.
We don't have to, we don't have to do that in this motion?
Yes.
Yes. So would you amend your motion?
I will amend the motion. I'll move to exclude items seven and 25 and move forward with the demolition on the other remaining item.
I'll second.
All in favor of approving, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. So items number seven and items number 25 have requested work?
Yes, ma'am. I think the ordinance would reflect that seven and 25 would be authorized to enter into a work program, assuming they could meet the requirements.
Assuming that they meet the requirements.
Yes, ma'am.
So we don't need to do, okay. So automatically, they'll just go up to the second floor for these two items, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Okay. May I have a motion for item number nine, please?
So move for approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Please signify by, I'm sorry.
Mayor, I'm sorry, question, just for the sake of clarity for the public. City Manager, this address, Buffalo, 3910 Buffalo, this structure was separated from the other 23 that we just, or 25 that we just voted on because it is a clear and present danger to the community, and that's why it was separated out?
It's totally separate and apart from the actions tied to number eight. There have been issues at this address and we believe it is a danger to the public and we need you to declare it an imminent danger. And then hopefully they'll clean it up, but if not, we will.
Okay, I just want to clarify why we broke it out from the others, the other structures.
I think it has gone before, but I'll let Mr. Boone go a little further.
Yes, sir. So the 25 was kind of our normal packet of when we do multiples at one time. It was in that regular cycle. This one was an issue of fire. And so it was, it's an urgent need of being addressed.
Yeah, when you look at the pictures, it's obvious for us, but I know the public doesn't see those pictures.
Yes, sir.
And so just wanted to clarify that why we separated that one out because it is a clear and present danger.
Yes, sir, and essentially it's urgent need of being removed.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? May I have? All in favor of approving item number nine, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. At this time, I need to read the caption for our executive session. At the end of the, close of the meeting, we will have an executive session to consider matters related to contemplating or pending litigation in accordance with Section 551.071 of the Government Code, Jefferson County, Texas versus City of Beaumont, Texas, number B-198481. Now is the time for any citizen that would like to speak. If you have not already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room. The clerk will call your name. You will have three minutes in which to speak. The green light will come on. At the end of your three minutes, the red light will come on. Please be advised that at the end of your three minutes, we would ask that you please stop and be considerate. Do you have?
Yes, ma'am. Gregory, and I think that's Wallace, 555M, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, y'all.
Good afternoon.
My name's Gregory Wallace and I'm a car builder and a painter from Port Neches, Texas. Poor decision-making landed me in TDC for a few years, DWI's. I enrolled at the House Center and the Hart School in Knoxville, Beaumont, Texas. I saw rich people concerned about the homeless here in town for about five years, we'll say. I took notes, but I was not homeless. I ended up homeless in the streets as a Christian and for a short time, and over a short time, my teeth were beat out of my head. In recent years, I've tried attending a church to try to see if God could use me and as a Christian on the street and my street knowledge to help the situation we have. I had no idea the criminal minds that wandered here in Beaumont nightly. I actually head out often late just to watch over and see what's going on at night here in Beaumont. I'm not trying to just jump into politics at all here in Beaumont, but recently I've upset a man named Joshua Cavett, a financial advisor, Mr. David Young of the Westminster United Presbyterian Church. And I believe somehow I've upset the police department also. I'm homeless from being sick for a few years, had an ulcer, and I was pulled out of a church service recently by Mr. Cavett. And he asked me if I knew H.B. Neal. He asked me if I knew Mr. Michael Getz. I said, "I've heard of them both, but I don't want, but I don't get to stay up on the politics too much because I'm homeless. Phones get stolen. I don't get to see the TV." I'm telling y'all, I don't know any of y'all. I don't. They said, he said to me, he said, "Well, they wanna buy a bus and they wanna have you get the homeless on the bus and take them wherever they wanna go in America." He said, "Not you because you go to our church, but I could get paid." And he mentioned how lucrative it would be. I won't mention the amount. That's not important. I just sat there in disbelief after all my teeth had gone, had been beaten out, thanks to this third most dangerous town in Texas. Come on, he doesn't care about me one bit either. I don't go there anymore and I'm ashamed at my text, plural, I sent to him concerning how I felt that that was kind of some selfish desires to rid Beaumont of the homeless. That way was sounding very evil to me biblically. What's that mean?
That means your time is up, sir. Are you at the end?
No, I'm almost, I won't take too much longer if you wouldn't mind. I've worked really hard on this.
Well, it looks like you have about two pages. Can you just sum it up in just a few minutes?
Well, pretty much, y'all. I see the work going on over on McFadden and I'm proud. I mean, I know Mr. Getz is involved and I heard Salvation Army's involved. It'd be best if I read this instead of me ad lib, please. Please, ma'am?
If you just, I'll give you one minute.
Okay. I think I don't know Mr. Getz's heart whatsoever. I'd be willing to sit down with him and hear if I could be helpful. Recently, I mean, I was on McFadden today. I had to eat at SOP. I had an ulcer. It's healed as of tomorrow. I'm putting my resume back together. Work for RCI. I've painted cars. I'll be able to go to work. I'll be able to leave Beaumont if that's what people want me to do. I'm cutting out a lot of it. I stand before you humbled before my God healed and tomorrow I'm gonna put my resume together. Ex-pike fitter Fabian Bell and I was in business together. He's on Street Outlaws right now. He's a good friend of mine. What I'm saying is, the police department, the government, and everything else, if y'all don't want the homeless to go, then I need to go. And I will go. But if I could stay and help in any way, I'm willing to not go drag racing, do whatever that ends up being. And I would stay and I would be as helpful as I possibly could. I'd sit down with Joshua Cavett and apologize. Yes, I know we got real problems here. I mean, I listen to him grumbling and complaining all day long at SOP. I'm done, last page.
Well, let me say this. At the end of the meeting, you can meet with Councilmember Getz and maybe you can exchange information, and thank you for your comments.
I was pretty much done. Thank you very much for all of y'all's,
Thank you.
hard work. You hear me? I love y'all. Thank you.
Thank you.
The Pharaoh Richard, 5275. I'm sorry, what was the address, Ms. Richard? I'm sorry. Park View Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon to everyone in the city council and guests just returning from Skiro and Tent City in Venice Beach, California, Los Angeles, California. I'm grateful for the tireless efforts by the Beaumont Police Department, the Texas Rangers, the FBI, and the Jefferson County Sheriff's Department in their efforts to solve the 26-year-old cold case murder of a young teacher. I'm glad you apprehended the suspect and he's been indicted. But I'm so confused. Do all lives really matter? In particular, do black lives matter or furthermore, does my life matter? Or does the lives of single white females matter only to law enforcement in Jefferson County, Texas? The Examiner article this week boasts of the 1,000 man-hours that it took to solve the cold case. While I stand here as a live cold case, number 2021012695, July 10, 2021, of a deadly conduct assault against me and two of my homeless passengers when my rental car was riddled with eight bullets, five in the tire, two towards the gas tank, and in the passenger door to set the car on fire with us in it. But yet, nothing has been done. Not one phone call has been received by me since July 10th, which is 10 weeks, 70 days, 1,680 hours of no response from the Beaumont Police Department. I followed the chain of command as directed. Detective Robishow, am I allowed to say names? No response. Lieutenant Bro, no response. Captain Shult, no response. The FBI and Bank of America on the second floor, no response. The next step, I guess, is the Texas Rangers or Washington DC FBI. I'm not sure. Detective Stagg and Sergeant Bowman of the Jefferson County Sheriff's Department have my phone in evidence. Sergeant Foot of the Beaumont Police Department has failed to document that I gave him my cellphone with 500 blocked calls and deadly threats from the alleged assailants and the gentleman who was accused of being a pedophile, who's a 27-time felon with two violent strikes, who in particularly has been believed to allegedly put the hit out on me. I'm constantly harassed and stalked by the Beaumont Police Department, meaning they come wherever I go. It's documented in my medical files that they followed me to Academy to watch if I was gonna purchase a weapon which the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution affords me the opportunity to protect myself. It's documented in my medical records that an undercover police officer was following me and watching all of my purchases. My mother has been called very disparaging names and also threatened on Facebook by these alleged assailants. The screenshots have been provided, the call logs have been provided, and yet, nothing has been done. So I ask you, as a single black female in Jefferson County, Texas, what does, why does my life not matter? I'm very happy that you found, I'm very happy that you were diligent because any assault against a woman, and especially the horrendous acts that were committed by that gentleman, well, not that gentleman, by that beast, that monster towards that young lady, it's horrendous. So please show me the same respect. Thank you.
Xena Stevens, 1001 Pearl, Beaumont, Texas.
Hello, thank you. Good seeing you, council members. I have been fielding a bunch of phone calls the last few days. And so I wanted to come before you guys and kind of explain to you what's gonna be going on. It's no secret that Commissioners Court has terminated an agreement that we've had with the city of Beaumont in reference to receiving inmates at our Jefferson County jail. I want to make it clear to the community and people in our citizens, you know, citizens in our community and to you guys that while we have ended a contract, that doesn't mean that we are letting all the criminals out of our jails and that we're gonna refuse to accept criminals upon arrest, okay? As the law would allow, I have the ability on any commitment, any warrant, to continue to accept prisoners. We're gonna do that. I'm a member of this community, along with the Commissioners Court members and you guys. We're gonna sit down and we're gonna iron out an agreement moving forward. But I want to assure you and the citizens of Beaumont, citizens of Jefferson County, that our community is not just gonna have criminals running around. And so I thought it was important for me to come here and say that because I'm sure you've been receiving a lot of phone calls, because I have. And so it's important to me and it's important, I know, to each of you as community leaders, but also community members, to make sure that the people, the constituents, our constituents, understand that we're all gonna work together and move forward and resolve this issue and resolve it soon. So thank you for letting me stand here before you today and address these issues. And please, if there are any questions, feel free to call me or contact me. I've been hearing stuff about what other sheriff's agencies do, sheriff's officers across the state do. A lot of it is apples to oranges. Some of it is apples to apples. For every sheriff's office that you come across, some will say, "We don't charge cities." And then other sheriff's offices will say that we do. And so it's important for everybody to be educated about what a warrant is. When do they become actually county prisoners? Some communities have small jails and so they don't charge the cities. And so I'm not a litigator. I'm not going to argue those issues. What I am here to say is, we're going to put people in jail who hurt people in our community. So rest assured, the community is still safe.
Thank you. Thank you so very much.
And I think this Winston McCullough, 2385 Broadway, Beaumont, Texas.
Thank you very much. I've got a problem and I'm at my wits' end about it. Over the past year, I've been paying $357.36 exactly to the penny on my water bill at 2385 Broadway. So I inquired and Danette, Ms. Danette knows about this, about this, and they researched it and they discovered that me and one other person in town, leave it to my luck, have this problem. She told me, Ms. Bridget in the back rather relayed to me, that whether I use zero gallons or a million, my water bill is going to be $357.36. And so I've been trying to get them to do something. They reached out to their computer people, have not heard back from them. And so anyway, so I asked them if they could calculate my water usage by hand. I was informed they couldn't do that because the formulas are in the computer. So I'm frustrated. I don't know where to turn. Now, I've got to say this, their computers that are being used are lousy. Up in building codes, for example. I go up there to take out a permit, they can't even find the house in the computer. Go to renew my contracted bond, they don't, they can't find me on file. And such is that. And they, they, you got good people working for you, but you need to give them good tools. And so I don't know where to go with this. I know I've overpaid that water bill for a long time. We got four people living there. Water consumption is anywhere from 4,200 to 6,000 gallons. And this bill is $357 every time, every time. And so I've got other properties at Lamar University, near Lamar, and they're duplex houses and they use three times that amount of water. And the bill is $155 to $165. And now this bill here, where they're using 4,200 gallons last month, $357. And we, and it, we can't seem to do nothing about it. And so I'm looking to you to try to look into this. I went upstairs and to Mr. Duryo's office. And so I left a message with the secretary, but evidently you didn't get it. I was going to reach out to you, see, because you were in my ward.
Mayor, I just say sorry you had to come down here. Thank you for coming down here. Todd Semino here is our Chief Financial Officer over the Water Customer Service Division. He works with Ms. Mickens and if they have time, maybe they can meet with you after this meeting and try to resolve this.
Okay. I'd like to have this money back that I've overpaid all this time.
If it's proven you overpaid, you will be, we'll get a refund.
It's a bunch.
Thank you for coming, sir.
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Could I make one other quick comment?
Sure.
Water usage, it appears that some of this is set by the size of the building or, or instead of the consumption. Now, I notice that, I, in my personal opinion, I think water rates should be done by consumption, not how large the building is.
It's done by consumption, sir.
And, well, no, no, ma'am, not necessarily.
Well, I think you're having a problem, but we're going to work through it and please see Mr. Semino and Ms. Mickens. Thank you. At this time, we will have council member comment and I will start with you, Councilmember Samuel.
I have nothing at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Felschar?
Thank you, Mayor. No comment.
Councilmember Turner?
To the gentleman in the back that had an issue, the homeless issue, I'd like to give you my contact information prior to you leaving, okay?
Councilmember Getz?
I was going to say the same thing. I've got my card. I'll, I'll be happy to visit with you about that, sir. Also, I want to add, and I don't know who needs to hear this, but there is some misinformation being put out there in the public concerning the effort to bring the Battleship Texas to Beaumont. And it is being said that should the Battleship Texas come to Beaumont and that they do not meet their attendance goals of 250,000 people per year, that in some way that the city of Beaumont would have to make up that shortfall. That's not true. This document that we received from the Battleship Texas Foundation, their request for proposals, it says nothing like that anywhere in there. So to whoever needs to hear this, the citizens of Beaumont would never be required to take on the maintenance obligations of the Battleship Texas. It would not fall on your shoulders. So I just want to make that point clear. And if you have any questions about that or need to see this document, I'll make a copy available to you. But you won't see anywhere in there that the obligations to maintain the Battleship Texas would at any time fall on the shoulders of the citizens of Beaumont.
Thank you, Councilmember Getz. Councilmember Duryo?
No comment, Mayor.
And the City Manager?
I do, you know, Tyrone Cooper is, of course, the city attorney and he is the president, which is a big deal of the International Municipal Lawyers Association. So he had to leave to attend one of their meetings, which is again, a big honor. He's the president of this international reputable municipal lawyers association. But, so he's not here, as you know, and Judge Lowly's in court. And Ms. Bruceard may say separately, but we talk all the time. But we just want to thank the council for your continued support and the working relationship that we have with y'all.
Thank you. Any comments, Miss, Mr. Appointee Attorney?
Mr. Cooper's replacement, you mean?
Mr. Cooper's replacement. Thank you. And I have no comments on today. Thank each and every one of you for coming. And again, if you have agreed to get into a work program, please go to the second floor to make your arrangements. And we will recess to executive session. Thank you.